Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this Select Board meeting for April 10th to order by roll call.
Newman present.
Smith present.
Krantz present. All of the people.
I believe this is the letter from the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, equal and equal with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thanks to have a full moon. Thank you to all the Senior Center members and COA. Okay. Have you all had a chance to look at our minutes of March 22nd and make any changes?
No. I make a motion to approve the minutes from March 27th.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Newman I.
Smith I.
Krantz and I. Okay. So, tonight on our agenda, you might have seen that we have put a very vague proclamation in place. And at this time, I would like to read that proclamation for you. And it's a Richard Mackey Day proclamation. Whereas the town of Sterling heavily relies upon dedicated volunteers to assist in the many facets of governing and running our small town, whereas there is a veteran volunteer, AKA Richard Mackey, whom the Select Board wishes to acknowledge as he finally and deservedly steps back for many of his volunteer duties. Whereas this committed citizen has made innumerable contributions of time and energy which oftentimes have resulted in real and powerful outcomes. Whereas this volunteer's commitment to his community has ultimately improved the lives of his fellow citizens. Whereas this person has served with dedication and commitment on so many boards and committees, he probably doesn't want to hear this, such as the Economic Development Committee, the Senior Center Design and Building Committee, the Monachuset Area Regional Transit, Monachuset Joint Transportation, Monachuset Regional Cable Advisory, Sterling Lancaster TV, Beach Renovation, Superb Photographer, Friends of the Library, Friends of the Sterling Seniors, and our Cultural Council. Whereas this volunteer has also served as a reliable, credible, and committed ambassador for the town of Sterling. And whereas this man is deserving of the town's greatest appreciation, the Select Board wishes to acknowledge their profound appreciation for Richard Mackey and his many years of service to the town of Sterling. Now and therefore, we, the Sterling Select Board, so declare April 27th as Richard Mackey Day. And we have a few people here that would like to say a few words, Richard. You'll get over it.
All right. It's not a eulogy now.
Which is why we're doing it. No, it's a setup. We have more committees. All right. Jim, would you like to go quickly first to the podium? This is Jim Pattikey, those people don't know, and he is the Chair of the EDC.
I think if you had this, you took our appreciation. I asked Maureen for 20 minutes.
I told him he's got two.
She promised me 20 seconds. In recognition of Richard Mackey's immeasurable contribution to Sterling's Economic Development Committee, we pay tribute to Richard Mackey, a dedicated and active Economic Development Committee member. Dick has attended almost every meeting since its inception in 2013. And I have a whole list of items that he's involved in. Maureen already taught me on that, and I want to keep to my 20-second rule here. Dick's always, Dick's first and foremost concern has always been how the Economic Development Committee could serve, best serve, and benefit the town. And Dick has always been a voice of good advice, insight, sound judgment. The Economic Development Committee is indebted to his invaluable contributions. Thank you, Dick.
Sherry?
Can you both just take a look at the camera here?
Yes.
Thank you. Sherry?
So, Mr. Mackey, my standing 8:30 Monday morning appointment. I would like to point out you have never been part of the Recreation Committee, not for lack of my asking, weekly, for you to come and join. But you do come into my office, you do help me with things, we talk about a lot. You have helped me through the rental agreements with the 1835. We're currently working together on the beach renovation, and I appreciate you and I thank you.
Greg? Few words? We have none.
You caught me off guard here. Good job. I mean, it's, Dick, you're amazing. You really are. Especially you sucked me into everything, too. But really, thank you so much, and I'm sure everybody here feels the same way. You're just amazing. Yeah, I mean, you talk about a eulogy, there's no way. I mean, you're the energizer bunny. You're gonna be going on forever. Mr. Mackey, as a taxpayer, first of all, thank you. You saved this town hundreds of thousands of dollars with your time and energy writing for grants. Having served on a couple of committees with you, it's just, you know, again, your knowledge of things, your commitment to get into the finish line versus you're taking forever, which is kind of what we do in this town. So you kind of, and as far as a eulogy goes, that's usually where people get recognized, but I gotta tell you, I'm ecstatic that they decided to do away here because you deserve every bit of this. Thank you.
Did anybody else want to speak?
I think Matt Downing.
Oh, finally.
Hi, my name is Matt Downing. I'm the Executive Director of Sterling Lancaster TV. I had a 13-page script, but Maureen said I couldn't do it today, so I go with the one page this time. 14 years ago, I started my career here as a volunteer for the station, and that's when I first met Mr. Mackey. He and a small group of dedicated residents started the station off the idea that they could help bring more value to the town by enhancing the visibility of local government. I think they've succeeded because the views go through the roof whenever Maureen says anything even remotely controversial. Armed with a passion, Mr. Mackey was never one to sit on his laurels. Those days, we were hard up for members, and so he would volunteer his time to go to events and film them. He still helps at annual town meetings. Once we'd established ourselves and the membership started flooding in, Mr. Mackey was able to dedicate his time towards being an active board member and making sure that our crazy video ideas and egos never ballooned out of control. Today, he serves as the President of the station, and we have meetings almost weekly which chat about the station, its direction, and town gossip. He taught me never to miss an opportunity and will chide me if I don't take this time to ask everyone in town to like, share, subscribe, and join our YouTube channel because we are going to be getting rid of Town Hall streams in Q3 this year, and everything's going to be going to YouTube. So again, subscribe and share if you don't want to miss riveting town government or town drama. Mr. Mackey will forever be part of our station, from the daily operations you've helped mold through the honorary plaques hanging on our studio walls adorning your name. Thank you, Richard, from all of us at SLCT for the hard work you put into making things greater for us and the town of Sterling.
Would anybody else like to say a few words?
Could I just add one thing?
No.
Dick's one of the few people that, I mean, you go to meetings and people say, "Why do we do this? Why don't we do that?" Not only does he say that, but "I'll do it" is what he says. Most people don't do that. He does, every time.
Yes, he does. I met Richard probably about 14 years ago and have sat on a lot of boards and committees with him. I have to say that, you know, he's the total opposite of me. You know, he's very calm, he's very intuitive, and he's...
Quiet.
Yeah, he's quiet until he has something to say. Kevin, I didn't need your input on this. And I can't say enough about how much he has brought to so many different tables, and I am always in awe of when he raises his hand again and again. So with that being said, and the proclamation, as far as, as far as April 27th being the Richard Mackey Day, I'd like to present him with this, "Thank you for your many years of volunteerism, hard work, and dedication." So this is from the Select Board.
Maureen, can you have a look at it?
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard? Would you like to say a few words? You know, like that, "I quit." Yes.
Richard Mackey, 300 Drive. This is a total surprise. Thank you very much. I deeply appreciate it.
Yep.
Want me to say a few words?
No.
Okay. David Swent, 34 Ford Road. In the small amount of time I've been involved with the antics and politics in this town, there was always a standout, no matter where you went, whether at the fire event, fire station, any town event, Mr. Mackey was always present. I want to thank him again for stuffing me with the town wipe. But we really need, I say this at many, many meetings, volunteers, and I doubt that in anybody's lifetime we'll come across another Mr. Mackey. So thank you. I appreciate it. The town appreciates everything you've done for us. Thank you.
As a fairly new member of Sterling and Sterling Boards, I just want to say you've been an inspiration to me because when I first started coming to meetings, every meeting I went to, you were there, and you didn't have to be there. And I thought to myself, if Mr. Mackey can be at every meeting, so can I. And I really appreciate you being that inspiration to me to get me involved and get me to more meetings, to learn more about the town. If not for your care, it's infectious, and I don't know if I would show up to the number of meetings that I do if not for your lead, and I truly appreciate that.
Roseanne? I know, Richard, there's one more person. She was late to the party.
Always late. Anyway.
She just got home.
33 Taff Road. Dick, I worked with you for a few years on many different boards and committees throughout the town, and it's always been a pleasure. You've always done your due diligence and then some. You went far beyond what was ever required of you, so humbly. And I don't know if you realize the gratitude that the people who worked with you feel for you, but I for one do, and I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
And while we're at it, we also have to recognize Ann Mackey for putting up with all of this. Thank you, Ann, for sharing him with us. And now, Richard would like us to quit. So we're just gonna wait two seconds. We're done, Richard. No more surprises.
Very good.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to Richard's family. Okay, so we are gonna skip a little on the agenda. I've already mentioned it to Sheila and the COA. David has to give that for training, so he has a couple of things. We're gonna do the Monachuset Fund expense and then the vote on Action 208.
Thank you. I'm sorry, everyone, to get us through this. So the first is, on March 29th, the Monachuset Fund Committee, which consists of the Police Chief, myself, and Peter McDonald, had a meeting to discuss a letter that was received from the Fire Department in regards to the purchase of infusion pumps for the ambulances in Medic 28. We currently don't carry them, and these pumps are designed for pre-hospital use. They're not unlike what you would see when you're visiting somebody in the hospital that's got an infusion pump going. It's just smaller, and it'll allow us to deliver more life-saving medications that we currently are unable to deliver because we don't have these pumps onboard. So the main reason is some of the new medications, they're allowing our paramedics to administer, have to be delivered in very precise dosages, and thus the reason why we would need these pumps put on the ambulance. So the recommendation from the Monachuset Fund Committee to the Select Board would be to fund up to $8,000 to purchase three Sapphire Multi-Therapy Infusion Pumps to come from the Monachuset Fund. The current balance in the Monachuset Fund is $170,332.55.
Any questions, Kirsten?
No.
None.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion to support the Chief's request to approve.
So moved.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Newman I.
Smith I.
Krantz and I. And then David, next?
Second thing is, for the past several months, I've been working with fire chiefs from two other fire districts that are served by Monachuset Regional Retirement System. We've been working on Worcester County Retirement because they're one of the few retirement boards that didn't accept the allowance of the Act of 2008, Chapter 467, which is allowing EMTs and paramedics to receive Group 4 benefits, which is the same as fire departments. So as you know, through the Finance Committee hearings and stuff like that, it's been more difficult to bring in firefighters and EMTs, and this would allow us to, well, basically it's all over the Monachuset District and throughout the state, but this would allow departments to hire paramedics that aren't firefighters, and they would fall into the same retirement system. This would also, now that we're doing, starting to do statewide mobile integrated health care, which is delivering services to people's homes out of the hospital setting to try to reduce hospital admissions, that would also allow communities to bring that. So this not require a town meeting vote to accept, it's required for our town that the Select Board vote on it. So I respectfully ask that you vote to adopt the Act of 2008, Chapter 467, and I believe in your packets, you have the one page write-up of what that is. I can read it for you if you have it.
We can read.
So it's enacted by the Senate and House of Representatives and General Court Assembled. Paragraph G of subdivision 2 of Section 3 of Chapter 32 of the General Laws, as appearing in the 2006 Official Edition, is hereby amended by the following paragraph. A municipality may elect to place in Group 4 Uniform Employees a municipal or public emergency medical service or certified at any level by the Department of Public Health as an emergency medical technician. This section shall take effect in a municipality upon its acceptance in the following manner: In a city having a Plan D or Plan E Charter by majority vote of its city council and approved by the manager; In any other city by majority vote of the city council and approved by the mayor; In a town by vote of the Board of Select. Approved January 9th, 2009.
Any questions, Kirsten?
No.
David? No. Well, then I would entertain a motion to support the Chief in moving forward with the Chapter 407, Act of 2008.
467.
467, I'm sorry.
So moved.
Saved.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Newman I.
Smith I.
Krantz and I.
Thank you. Thanks for your consideration on both. Just as a side note, we don't currently have anybody that falls under this, but I just wanted to get it in the books before the Retirement Board changed their mind.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, everyone. Thank you for...
Senior Center.
Thank you, Senior Center.
Anytime, just don't forget me.
Dick, congratulations.
It's always a catch. All right, and then, as you, as many of you know, we often ask various departments to come in and give us updates on where they are and where they're going, and tonight is the Senior Center and the COA. So Sheila's gonna speak to that. And just so you know, Sheila, you're not to be offended when I say shorten up your presentation, as you can tell from everybody else that speaks. I say that to everybody.
That's all right. I'll do my best to try to shorten it for you. So thank you for having me present at this meeting. I've started my six-month here and would like to express my sincere appreciation to our very talented Senior Center staff, all the volunteers, the COA Board of Directors, Friends of Sterling Seniors, the Sterling Select Board, and of course, all the people who patronize our building. It is all those I've mentioned who make the Center the success that it is. Here is a brief overview as to what has been happening since I've arrived. Starting in October, kitchen appliance repairs, freezer broke down, we had food loss, HVAC system evaluated, we hired a new company to maintain it, we had a Veterans Day lunch and dinner provided free of charge to veterans, both events sold out, and this event was supported by Foss. We do intergenerational just about every month, sometimes twice a month now. Students came in and created the cards for the veterans. Sholen Farms, Apple Fest, and Educational Luncheon was a sellout as well. We also addressed multiple instances of financial elder abuse in conjunction with the Sterling Police Department, and we worked tirelessly to educate the seniors who were at risk. November, the kitchen appliance repairs continue. We had intergenerational pickleball, window painting, and reading tutors volunteering over at Choxit School. In December, the kitchen appliances repairs continued. We purchased a new freezer, which the Foss reimbursed us for. Thank you very much. The ukulele club played over at the school at their winter festival. They had a winter concert, which was standing room only. There was a presentation by Leamester Credit Union on scams to create the awareness of the elder financial abuse that is and was occurring rapidly. Public-use computers removed from the classroom to an area by the pool tables for increased visibility and accessibility. The ukulele club travels around to other senior centers playing, attract an excellent audience. One of my goals when I was hired was to attract a younger working senior. We kicked that off by having Comedy Night with the help of Deb and the Events Committee. It was a sellout, and we had excellent feedback. We lost response to Thursday yoga. The open spaces of Sterling got ahold of me to talk about starting a hiking club. Our new HVAC control system was installed. After noting the damage on the floors that were not carpeted in the building, a floor project was approved for us to start. In February, World Ukulele Day brought in over 50 ukulele players from around our communities and beyond, attended by standing room only. The kids came across from the Choxit School and made 100 Valentine gift bags with handmade cards, candy, and gift donations from both LCU and Clinton Savings Bank. Valentine's Day lunch and dinner, both had live entertainment. Lunch was sold out, dinner had an excellent turnout. We livestreamed a NASA event where students from the Winchandon Regional School District asked questions live to the astronauts at the space station, and they were answered.
Monachuset.
Monachuset, I'm sorry. What did I say?
Winchandon.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. As a new set of eyes, I noticed that the paper towel dispensers in the bathrooms were put in an awkward position across the threshold of the doorway. I had those moved for safety and had the main walls in the bathrooms repainted. We were also informed that the VNA Wellness Division shut down and the visiting nurse program ended. I moved all personal care and medical-related appointments to Wednesdays from outside of the classroom to the private office along our three-office wall. In March, with Marty French, I designed a new class called Be Steady to be more inclusive of persons with physical limitations and for anyone who uses adaptive metal equipment, medical equipment such as wheelchairs, rollers, canes, et cetera. It's a step down from going steady. St. Patrick's Day lunch and dinner were both sold out. We had live music at lunch, step dancers at dinner, both had excellent feedback. Again, to attract younger working seniors, I started investigating an evening yoga class to move up students and attract more working seniors. This month, intergenerational hula-hooping has already passed with about 20 people involved. Game Day was today. They played both Wii bowling and board games. The other day, we turned all the TVs to the solar eclipse for those who didn't have glasses. Earth Day's coming up on the 22nd. There'll be the formal announcement made, although I'm clearly doing it now, about a Tuesday morning hiking club. It'll be weekly. There'll be a recycling presentation by the Rotary Club. Tim will be barbecuing. We'll have live entertainment by John Riley. There'll be a recyclable make-and-take craft with the Sterling Garden Club, and there'll be a historical nature walk along the Stillwater River, which will be led by Jim French. We also have a murder mystery dinner coming up on the 25th, and that is hosted by the COA Board Event Committee and volunteers. That event sold out yesterday morning. It had only been on sale for seven business days. Volunteer Lunch and Learn to Get Everybody Together is gonna be Friday, the 19th. The Sterling Community Television Station, Brandon specifically, made a commercial for the Sterling Senior Center. It's awesome. It's on both their YouTube channel and playing at our TV in the lobby. And we brought back the nursing service, the visiting nurse, who is now also one of our employees as a van driver, to the second Wednesday of each month. Upcoming in May, we have intergenerational pickleball at Choxit on the 1st. We have a bird walk for beginners with Marion Larson and Scott Handler on the 8th. We have the student art reception and exhibition. The reception is Tuesday night, the 7th, from students, the artwork of students from Holton Choxit. The Be Steady class that I mentioned a few minutes ago will be instructed by Marty French, starts Wednesdays at 2:00. We have a Mother's Day Tea Event, the 10th, at 1:00. Our Caregiver Support Group starts back up. We had lost it back in January or February, be run by Angelique Harvey of Oakdale. The Foss Yard Sale is the 11th. Evening Yoga starts every Tuesday evening from 6:00 to 7:00 on the 14th. The Hiking Club meets every Tuesday at a selected trailhead at 9:00 a.m. On the 23rd, the Ukulele Spring Concert is at 1:45, followed with a chicken barbecue dinner at 5:30, hosted by the COA Board Committee. In June, I'm almost done. In June, intergenerational pickleball comes back to Choxit on the 5th, and on the 8th, the Recreation Department will be hosting in our parking lot a bike rodeo and safety event. In August, the Classic Car Show, sponsored by Foss and the COA Board, is on the 15th with live entertainment by Neon Alley. And Foss has asked for Clinton Savings Bank to sponsor an ice cream truck. If you have a car you'd like to exhibit, please let us know. In addition, with the number of people aging into seniorhood, Sean is now here up to four times a month. With that, I thank you for all the support of the Senior Center and for the opportunity to speak tonight. Thank you.
And you should mention this is all in your newsletter every month. The calendar is in there.
Absolutely. My notes are also in the COA...
And then, I know I asked you to keep it short, but we forgot to talk about the outreach workers.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, from January through March, my volunteers gave us over forty-three-hundred hours of volunteerism. And at fifteen dollars and seventy-five cents, which is minimum wage, they donated over sixty-eight thousand dollars of their time. And that's just in the first three months. Outreach had over fifteen-hundred interaction with the seniors of this community.
All important.
It is, it really is.
I mean, no offense, but more important than pickleball at this point, so...
Oh, it absolutely is, but that was back to page one.
Okay, any questions, Kristen?
No, just thank you. The few times that I've come in, you take a lot of time to talk to me, and boy, do you get things done.
Oh, thank you.
You know what's going on in every inch of that building, in every moment. Your door is always open when I'm there. Anyone that comes in and has a question, you know the answer for them right away. I mean, the multitasking that you do is unreal, and I appreciate it. And I know you can't do that without all of your volunteers, and so any of them who are here watching, you know, a huge thank you to everyone who helps get the Senior Center running.
Thank you.
David?
Just one question. Do you have some type of competition going on with Sherri on who can host and carry on more functions?
My goal as the Director is to reach and help as many seniors as I possibly can with the amount of time that we're open. And I also feel, as the Director of a municipal building, I also have a few fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers of Sterling. So I'm trying to do it.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Kevin, would you like to?
I'm good. She did everything on television. Excellent job.
Oh, you're gonna take credit for... Nice work, Kevin. All right. I know, Sheila, you don't exactly get excited when you see you walk in the door, but thank you for all that you do and all of the things that you are trying to bring to the town.
Don't sell yourself short, Maureen. It's always a pleasure. She doesn't take compliments.
Thank you, Sheila.
Thank you.
And thank you all, to the members of the COA. All the volunteers that may be watching or listening, keep up the good work, all of you. Thank you so much. I mean, I sat in on COA meetings, Richard, how many years ago? Fourteen, fifteen years ago, and trust me, they're nothing like they are today. You know, you guys are dedicated and you stay awake at the meetings. It helps. And you come up with some fabulous ideas. So, you know, between the COA and then, of course, the Friends Group with Pam, you know, fabulous, exciting, exciting stuff. So, makes me proud to be part of all of the beginnings of that with Richard and Kevin and a couple of few other people. Maybe Greg was even involved, who knows? Anyway, thank you again. Okay, so, anybody else on that? All right, now we have the... You don't have to stay. I know you're all itching to move in.
Is he bored?
Yeah, the Lizzy Borden presentation is over at the library at seven-thirty, I believe. No, at the Senior Center at seven-thirty, so... All right. Joe, you can move up to your front seat now.
I can.
Not really, just kidding.
My ears are all state. Congratulations.
All right, Bill, you wanna talk to us a little bit about this MVP grant letter of support?
Yep, we've mentioned it over the last several meetings, but a letter of support from the Select Board. Stephen Ryan and I are looking at the Route one forty pump station and the access to it, which is continuously sustaining damage. So, going for the MVP, the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Program. This would give us kind of a feasibility of study of what we are looking at for options to fix that, being that it's between the East Wachusett Brook and the Stillwater River. At this point, we have letters of support from our legislators, DCR, DPW Board as of last night, Planning Board, so if you are interested in supporting, make a motion and sign on.
Any questions, Kristen?
No, I would make a motion that we sign the letter for the MVP.
All right, so in your minutes there that you're gonna do for comma, Bill, you might say that Kristen made a motion. All those in favor?
Me and I.
Smith and I.
Excellent. I'd really love to see something actually get done on that. Okay, and then, the, okay, the Finance Board sent us a letter, I think everybody got a copy of it, that they would like to send to the district as far as Dr. Riley. And everybody get the letter?
Mm-hmm.
And read it?
Yep.
And what are your feelings on it?
I would just like to know what the, I know what the intention is, but what are you expecting the district to do at this point? Or is it just a letter letting them know how you feel? Because I feel like they definitely know this by this point, but so what are you hoping to gain by sending the letter?
Well, we don't know that they know exactly what we do. So, what we intend to convey is it's not about the minimum required contribution, it's not about the transportation, it's not about the debt service. It's all about the over seventeen percent increase in the discretionary request from the school district. That's shared by another school district, at least one that has already written a letter, so we are writing a letter in support as well. That other town was Holden, and they asked for a three-point-two percent overall budget increase. We're looking to affect the discretionary piece of it only, whereas they want the entire budget on it.
Are you hoping that they will make changes at this point, or just...
It's probably unlikely that they will, but I think it's important that as a Finance Committee and potentially as a Select Board, and we're asking for your signature as well, we will send the letter regardless of having a Select Board signature to it, and we will remove the Select Board if they decide not to vote to authorize it. But I think it's important that we state our position on that. Even if it doesn't work this year, another year of the kind of budget increases that we've seen, and last year it was over six million in total increase, this year it's five-point-seven million, almost the same number this year as an increase. And that is without the benefit of any significant Chapter seventy-eight helping us out this year on that. So, we think it's very important to state our position as a town.
David?
I'm gonna have to agree that, you know, enough is kind of enough here. They just keep seeming to wanna spend more and ask for more as time goes on, so I don't know if it's gonna do any good, but at least I'll know we're paying attention.
Yeah, well, the School Committee is also, well, they did the Chapter seventy. The School Committee sent a letter to the district and to the legislature. But my only, I mean, nobody's happy with the numbers. I mean, we've known that since we've been going to the meetings, and even when they came here. I mean, nobody's happy. None of the towns are happy. But to me, I feel as though it's a little bit, and my objection to signing it on the Board's part is, in the letter you have, the Sterling Finance Committee is recommending a no vote for the school article on the ATM warrant. So, because we've already said that we support that article for the school, so this is saying the Finance Committee, but having our name on it, in my opinion, is not the way to go. And I do think we're a little late to the party for this year, but I would really like to see us next year, and I think we even talked about this as far as getting it into it. Are you still here, Kevin? Those dark.
We woke us all up.
That's just me, though, as far as, you know, if David and Kristen feel like they wanna sign it...
I only see your name on it.
Yes, right now, it's only my name on it as the chair, as it's only Mr. Handy's name, although I did watch the meeting, so I understand where the Finance Committee is coming and coming from. I mean, I watched last night's meeting. But, so, I personally don't want my name on it, but if you guys wanna sign it as Select Board members, that's fine. But I don't, we've already said that we're gonna support the article. I mean, that's part of it. And the other part of the conversation you had last night, oh, okay, so the updated one, I see that you do have the School Committee people on it.
We did.
Yeah. All right, because it's important for them to know. They already know that you're not supporting the articles, but, you know, to see it in writing.
So you watched the meeting last night, so you know we discussed the CC list on it, so we've improved and updated it.
Yes, I see that it's updated right now.
Yes, indeed. We were updating it in real time.
I know.
I think if you watched the meeting, we figured you would have this reaction.
No kidding.
And prefer to not have a Select Board signature on it. I will restate, despite that, we are going ahead with sending the letter.
That's fine. But, you know, and like I said, it's just my name, I don't want it on it as a chair. However, if my partners in crime here would like to sign their names to it, it's fine. You know, and like I said, I totally understand where the Advisory Committee is coming from. I don't disagree with it, it's just that I feel it's a little bit too late at this point in the game to send this out. I would've liked to seen it, you know, before our warrant was out, and probably even better back in the days when we were going up to the high school, like last month.
We did as well, Maureen. You apologized for not bringing it to meeting two weeks ago.
Yeah.
We had hoped sooner than later as well.
Well, you sent it at four o'clock in the afternoon, so nobody had a chance to read it, Joe.
No, I did not. No, I did not.
It was five oh five. I can look it up right now.
I did not, Maureen. I should have.
All right, I'm not gonna argue with you about it. We got it late in the day, just before our meeting, so I'm not gonna argue about it. Sorry we didn't get to it two weeks ago. But, so, David and Kristen, it's up to you, what do you wanna do?
I came and spoke to Bill today, too, that I was, you know, I feel like it's a little bit too late. I don't think, I mean, their budget is done, just like ours is done. They're not gonna be making any changes. So, I don't really know what it's gonna do at this point. I'm pretty sure they know how we feel about it. So, I personally would not sign my name to it, but I'm, of course, not opposed to the Finance Committee sending it out.
No. Pardon?
It shall be done.
So, it would just be with the Finance Committee. So I would make a recommendation or a motion that, you know, the Finance Committee can send this information out to the district, Riley, and all the CCs on there, which is all the other towns, just so everybody knows, you know...
Those are the other town Finance Committee chairs.
Right, all the Finance Committee's chairs, none of the Select Boards at this point.
Correct.
So... Second?
Second.
Okay, so done. All right, thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
All right, and then, Bill?
I'm up.
You're up.
At the last meeting, you approved moving forward with the architect for the windows here, to get everything together. They were in last Friday, starting to take the measurements and everything they need, so we'll get moving and look at what options we eventually have moving forward. Townwide cleanup, May fourth. Town meeting is the sixth. I got the last signature I needed tonight, so I can send it, the warrant and everything over to the printer. Annual town elections, the thirteenth. We have received the quotes that we were looking for for the erosion control and rain garden at the beach, so we just talked to the contractor, that was the lowest bidder today, Ryan and me. So we will be having a pre-construction meeting to figure out what they need to do versus what we need to do and what kind of timeline all of us have between grading the parking lot, their trenching, the rain garden, some of the tree work that we have to have. Did I miss anything? Okay. And MVP grant, we've already mentioned that, and Stephen and I and Ryan, obviously, we're moving forward with the one-stop grant application relative to the downtown project now that Weston and Sampson is really moving forward on getting some more finalized information for us. I don't wanna say it's done, but we're getting closer, so we have until June on that application. Elevator and lift, we're getting quotes, well, the elevator's fine at the library, lined up, getting the quotes on the lift, so that should be coming to fruition reasonably soon. Town beach, we've already mentioned, and Lozaro paving in the next couple of weeks, now that the asphalt plants are opening, should be commencing work on the Maple Street and Bird Street sidewalks.
Looking forward to that. Long-incoming.
And the handful of our projects that you approved a couple of weeks ago are underway.
Kristen? Nothing. You got plenty. David?
I have nothing related to this, but I'd like to add something to the upcoming agenda.
Okay, well, can we finish with this first? So, yeah, we got a couple of things to add to the upcoming agenda, but one thing, and David, you may wanna address this. We got a letter from Ms. Ritchie about the date for the cleanup. Explain in public session why the date is May fourth.
The date was changed because of scheduling conflicts on my end. This was brought up two different times in public session, and it was also posted on the agenda for one of our meetings. Each weekend, either Saturday or day, which is generally when the event would be held, I had conflicts that I just could not make it, so we had to push the cleanup day to May fourth.
Okay. Can I say something about the, I realize, we, you know, with the whole thing, I would just maybe suggest for next year to maybe think about the planning of it earlier than what you did this year. I've talked to Roseanne in the past, you know, about the past year's cleanups, that even April twentieth is way too late, okay? Because I clean the streets myself, and I shared with all of you, okay, that the poison ivy is really active out there, even right now. By the time the warmer weather comes, all of the trees are bloomed, you're dealing with prickaboo bushes, you're dealing with ants and black flies in your face, you're dealing with hot weather. It was seventy-one degrees yesterday while I was out cleaning two bags of trash on Gates Road. So, you know, I would encourage people also that you don't have to wait for May fourth. You can go to the DPW and get some yellow bags, and they'll give you some gloves if you want to do something earlier in your own time. I do it on my own time. Okay, so, you know, I mean, I was out there in December, okay, cleaning up trash from Dunkin' Donuts down here, and I picked up five bags of trash just from here to Dunkin' Donuts. So, you know, I would also consider maybe possibly having a little mini cleanup if the weather is decent in, you know, December, like we have eighty-two... the weather is decent in, you know, December, like we have eighty-degree days in December now, okay? So, I realize.
Well, we can look at it again next year and, okay, cleanup. You know, you can talk to the Boy Scouts or the Girl Scouts, see if they're interested in that, or the Yahoo group, or whatever, you know. But this is, this is something that, you know, David and Ryan and actually Richard and Roseanne had started years ago.
Right.
And then David and Ryan graciously took it over, and it coincides with the DPW open house, which is another reason that, because it's all down to the.
Cleanup day is the day of the open house.
Everything is happening, see, everything, and this was talked about and written about, and everything is happening down at the DPW. So, because downtown Sterling, we have Sterling Street Market is May fourth, and there's a luncheon at the church, so it's your first Saturday of the month. So, a lot of people are gonna be out and about, and hopefully we'll see what's going on and then tag on next year.
Next year, I would, I would suggest to you to even have it like the last weekend of March, you know, weather permitting and stuff, because it's just hot now. You know, everything is hot. I mean, come on, it was seventy-one.
Last Friday?
Yeah.
And Thursday? And Wednesday?
Well, you know, give or take.
Okay, so we can discuss that early next year, but this year it's May fourth. Okay, thank you. Probably put you in the lead.
I don't mind being in the lead, okay? As long as people are gonna work with me, you know, I can work with you, Tony, okay? I don't want to butt heads with anybody.
Okay.
And Laura's defense, I mean, she does unbelievable amount of.
Oh, I understand that.
Out here, I picked up seventy bags of trash myself.
I understand that, and we recognize you for that, I'm sure, in a public session, but, you know, it is what it is right now.
And I'm keeping track of it on my calendar in case I ever have to use it for community service.
I don't know if you can bank community service.
In case I ever get thrown in jail.
I'm saying, I don't know that you can bank it, though.
Yes, I will, for good time served.
Let me know how that works out. I'm gonna start. Okay.
Community service.
All right, so.
I literally keep track of it on my calendar.
Oh, that I believe, I just don't know if you can, you can use it when you get arrested and thrown in jail.
What's the likelihood?
Okay, so, the other thing, oh, candidate's night, next Wednesday, the seventeenth, right here in this room, and the ballots are ready and probably be out within the next couple of weeks as far as you can mail in for, for the elections this year, even the local elections, which the town clerk is really excited about. But you do have people running in each area, the Board of Assessors, Dawn Murray, Richard Lane is running for two different things. He's running for the Board of Health, as we all know, as well as the town moderator's job. Jen will be moderator this year, but she's opted out of next year. Then on Board of Health also, you have Gail Hassett running, Board of Trustees. We got, pretty much, we got Dawn Carter, we got Andresa Sayut, Say it? I don't know how to say her name. And Audrey Cutler. The DBW, Andrew Parker is running again. Planning Board, we have Eric Newman. Light Department, Eric Darlington. And then the Wachusett School Committee, Melissa Wallace is up for that seat. So, they'll all hopefully be here next Wednesday, so you can know who, what and when. All right, not much else happening. Hopefully, everybody enjoy the eclipse after all the hype, you know? Did you go to Maine?
No, I was here.
Ah.
I would have had to go way up.
Yeah.
Not where I was, but probably the same as here.
Hours to get home, apparently. Mr. Beltre, do you have anything you would like to add to? It's a pleasure to see you. I'm getting over there, relax. Starting on this side of the room, gonna work over here. Hang on. Richard?
I'm all set, thank you.
I wasn't talking to you. Talking to Mr. Ryan.
I'm Mr. Maney. I'm all set. Today's not your day yet, relax. I'm all set, thank you.
Twenty-seventh, Richard. Nikki?
Just want to let everybody know that the tax, the real estate tax bills have gone out, and we're really hot and heavy with that, and excise bills are out, so we're real busy in our office. But come on, see us.
I thought I told you not to send me any more of those.
Nope, never said that.
Still got it. Roseanne?
Thank you. I just saw that there's luncheons going on over here at the First Church, and they're now saying that people should drive over to the senior center and be picked up by there. Is that the, the MART buses? How does that work? Okay, but how does MART work? Do we pay the gas and all that other stuff on MART?
No, that'll be all, all taken care of. They.
That's on their expense.
Right. Trust me, I checked with that, and MART was.
I just, I just didn't know the process, thank you.
No, I was concerned about the process myself, Roseanne.
Thank you.
As you well know. Laura, anything more? You want us to put on Jared next time for the bail money, or?
She has her log.
The next thing I want to talk about, I'll talk about in public session.
This is public session, we're done.
All right. Last year.
Very quick, Laura.
Very quick, I gave Kamah Jane a copy of the DOT evaluation that was done, that Sue Valentine had spearheaded. Did you guys get a copy of that? No?
Possibly, I don't remember.
I gave a copy of it to Kamah Jane. Sue Valentine had gotten the DOT to come do a free evaluation of the schools.
Oh, yes, 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 we are aware of that, for the fourteen-thousand-dollar grant.
Yes, I was wondering what the process is with that.
Well, and that's actually a conservation.
Oh, that's a trails grant.
A trails grant?
This is the safe at school thing.
Oh, oh, okay, that one.
You can give it a hundred thousand dollars or a million dollars or something like that to repair the school grounds, all the, yeah, I gave it to Kamah Jane. Sue Valentine.
When she gets back, I'll ask her about that.
I have it on my computer at home, I didn't bring a copy with me, but.
Could you send it over, Laura?
I will, because, you know, the situation transpired because of the parking situation over there, and so Sue, you know, had gone to a meeting down in Hyannis for school board members and.
All right, just send it over, and, and we'll look at it and talk, I know you talked to me about it.
Yeah, you can fix like all the broken sidewalks over there, the, you know, with the buses.
If we get the grant.
Yeah, there's grant money that the state will give you for, I don't know, safe at school type of stuff.
Okay. Joe?
All set, thank you.
Okay, just looking at this email I have from you that came in on four thirty-three.
You weren't going there.
Okay.
Okay, I'll adjourn a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Billy? Excuse me, I couldn't, I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
Not that one.
Huh?
Go ahead. All those in favor?
Newman I.
Well, no, we have to tell them what.
I don't want to tell them that. I'll wait to come.
That's right. All those in favor except me? All right, thank you.